Thank you, Charlie. We're on to our first public hearing, which Arlie will be presenting. Both, yes? Yeah?
Chair Kumali, I own my primary residence within 500 feet of this, and so I'm going to recuse myself, but as it is my primary residence, I'm going to remain in the gallery as a member of the public.
Thank you, Commissioner Moss.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chair. It's good to see a full house. So we're looking at an extension of a use permit and design review permit that were approved last October, more than a year ago. And let me launch this properly. There we are. So this is the City Storage Permit Project. It's on the corner of Adeline and 40th Street. I've highlighted or outlined it in red here. Just to the north of the project are the Green City Lofts. Oakwalk sits here, and Commissioner Moss in on Dante is down here. The city border runs through the project. These are pictures of the building as it is now, a little bit dark. This has clearly not been used in some time. The property has been sitting vacant for a while. This is the north border of the property. There is a truck loading area included in the property, looking along Adeline. This is the back edge on 40th, and then the corner itself. Here is a general plan of the project. Oh, excuse me, let me just interrupt myself. I'm going through the project again, as it's been more than a year, and I understand there are a number of Commissioners that were not here for part of the original approval. So let me know if you have questions, or don't remember anything. Again, Green City Lofts to the north. The layout of the first floor includes the truck loading I mentioned, garage entry for cars with a parking area inside, some offices, and then the general storage area represents most of the building. There is a retail space carved out on the corner with an exterior porch area. So going through the different floors, the first floor, as I said, garage, office, retail, storage. The second floor, purely storage. And you can see the square footage. Sorry, let me go back there. Square footage is on the right for the different uses. Total square footage of storage is close to 50,000. And then, this is the roof view. So the manager's apartment is a separate third floor, and I'll show you a zoom in of that in a moment. This roof used, or excuse me, is now a little bit of a barrel roof. It will become flat, and then the existing roof itself will be raised up and have solar panels on the top, and there will be skylights throughout. So here is the manager's apartment on the third floor. It's a two-bedroom apartment. It utilizes a stairway that has a separate entrance door to Adeline, and there is a deck facing south towards 40th. The primary use of the first floor includes the truck and car entrances to the parking garage. Truck loading will occur here. This is the main staging area with offices, front desk, a few more offices south of these entrance stairs, bathrooms, elevator, bike parking, and trash. And then these are the carts that will be used to carry stuff to the storage units. Looking at the elevations, we'll start with the north. The elevation that's filled in here is the, is a little bit beyond, and that's, in front of it is the truck loading area. So that's why that's filled in. So this is as it is now. You can see this is the domed roof, and then there are pop-up skylights now that will be removed. And then, as it will be, the roof line is a little bit higher, and there are new art panels along here, and then beyond is the manager's unit. Again, the manager's unit is not right against the north wall, but pushed back a bit. Looking from Adeline, you can see the curved roof there, removed, the truck loading beyond. This will be the main entrance, garage and pedestrian, the windows to the office. This is the door that functions both as an emergency exit from the second floor and as the entrance to the manager's unit. The art panels again, and also here on the balcony for this retail space on the corner. This panel will be used as placement for art. That is yet to be determined. Excuse me, that was, was that the pan? Yes, sorry. The panels are the art. So, excuse me, this was, I did not catch that. It's old. Moving on to 40th, again, panels wrapping the ramp up to the porch area for the retail. This shows you clearly these pop-ups going away, and the roof raising a little bit. And then, this is kind of a, not a right angle, wrapping up to the north again. There's a new entrance, or excuse me, exit from the storage area. And again, this is the soft angle on that one corner, and then the adjacent building sits very, very little distance away from it, and so it's shown as a dotted line here blocking the rest of this building from view. There are signs included in this application, two larger signs above the main entrance to the storage unit, and then on the farthest east side of the 40th elevation above that exit door, and then two smaller signs on either side of the corner at Adeline and 40th. You can see their dimensions here. Moving on. This shows the landscape plan. There are two rain gardens to help process the runoff from the roof, one in the rear here and one here. It is the rear portion of this because it needs to be on their private property, and the property line does sit beyond the end of the sidewalk. So there's some landscaping that they're going to be doing that's technically in the public right-of-way. All of the street trees that you saw in the photos will remain, and this is the pallet, planting pallet, proposed, both for the rain garden and the other landscaping, which does extend all the way up to the garage area here. So to go through the review process, the use is personal storage, which is allowed in the MUR with the CUP it's applying, or it has been granted. The setbacks are dependent on whether there are residences adjacent. So there's no setback required to the east and the south, where residences are not present. There are residences to the north and west. On the west side, a setback of three feet is required, which is met. On the north, a setback of 10 feet plus two feet per, one foot above the 30-foot height limit. A little complicated here. The building height is 26 feet 4 inches, or proposed, and so required setback is 10 feet. Where that truck loading area is, that setback is met. Where, beyond that, to the east, where the building wall sits on the property line, that setback is obviously not met, and we would deem that existing nonconforming, or legal nonconforming, because they are not altering the existing wall of the building. The floor area, in that area, is 1.2 by right, up to 1.6 with a CUP. The proposed FAR is 1.58. Therefore, the full bonus is required. We're still in the existing planning, so the bonuses are awarded in thirds. The height is 30 feet by right, up to 55 feet with a CUP, at maximum height of 39.3, that's the manager's unit, a CUP, and 2/3 of the bonus is required. So since they're looking for almost the full bonus in the floor area, they do need to apply to supply three amenities. The proposed amenities are public right-of-way improvements, they're expanding their sidewalk to the 7 feet 6 inches. The alternative energy, they're providing the solar panels on the roof, which they believe will carry most of their energy load even in winter, and they are providing public art along Adeline and 40th with the panels. Excuse me, this is, yeah, the sculpture panels, so. So that bonus was met. As far as the car parking, excuse me, the zoning code does not provide a requirement for public storage. We recommend that the proposed 11 spaces be adequate, and that's based on the owner's experience with, I believe, two other storage facilities that they have, and experience with looking at how many cars come and go per day. And then as far as bike parking, they need to provide one space, exterior, interior, and for the residential unit, and they are showing these and have agreed to a condition with the residential unit, providing those. So this, this condition of approval is there. As far as a significant structure, the building does qualify as a significant structure. The staff would like to argue that this is not a demolition. All of the elements that qualify this building as a significant structure are being maintained and/or improved and renovated, and therefore, this does not need City Council approval as demolition or alteration. It is simply a reuse of the building. The hours of operation for the business are 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, 11:00 to 4:00 on Sundays. There will be two full-time employees, one of whom lives there, and the anticipated daily load, once people are settled in, is one truck, eight cars, and three walk-ins each day. So this is an extension, not an approval. These are the three findings to make the extension. Staff feels that these findings can be made. I'll let you read through them again. And therefore, staff recommends that this extension be approved. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Yes?
There was a resident in Green City Lofts that had objected, and I think it went up to the City Council, and then it was pulled back. Was there a change in the plan made?
Cynthia Carpenter was the resident. She filed an appeal after your approval and then withdrew it before it proceeded. The appeal that she filed was generally, it served as a placeholder because she was in negotiations with Lester Schwartz, the owner. They reached an agreement that she found satisfactory, and that's why she withdrew the appeal.
But did the agreement modify the building?
The agreement was about the roof height
Yes.
...on the farthest northern wall. So my understanding is that the roof height currently is, at the very edge, on the northern edge, is 17 feet, and the proposal is that that edge will go up 1 foot 10 inches, and then at a slope away from the Green City Lofts, it will increase in height away from that edge, as opposed to being a hard corner that would be a little higher. So they just kind of shaved the edge off of that northern.
So there was a small change?
Yes, yes. So I apologize, do not have new plans, updated plans with that change, but a small change there.
Were there any other community comments since the West approval?
Yes. This lovely lady here, Cassandra, is also a resident of Green City Lofts, and I believe will be speaking under a public comment to express some concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
But nothing in between now and then. Any other questions?
Any other questions? No. Thank you, Arlie.
No problem.
I'd like to open up the public comment session. Each person will have three minutes to speak, and please do sign in, and come on up to the dais.
I'll write the rest down later.
That's fine. You can finish up at the end.
Hi, everyone.
Bring the mic down to, yeah. There you go.
My name is Cassandra Adams, and I actually don't live in Green City Lofts. I own two units there, one in Emeryville, one in Oakland. And the one in Oakland that I own is the one that is, it's also very much adjacent to this project, and so I want to speak to that. The reason I didn't come last year is because I did not own it at that time, so this is my first opportunity to respond. In general, one thing too I wanted to say, I'm an architect, so I understand this process. I like the project, and so I've actually met you once before long ago.
Please speak into the mic so everyone can hear you.
Anyway, in general, I'm for the project. I do have some concerns, and those are the things I want, you know, would like for you all to address in your conditions for the project. I had written a whole thing, and I will email it to you, I guess to you tomorrow, and so for the record, and so on. One thing, I was wondering if we could go to the site plan so I can show them?
On the bottom right, forward and backward.
A second. And then the pointer, if you can turn on for a second, I'll just show you the unit that I own.
They can see it.
They can see it.
Oh, okay. So it's right here. And so the other person who had the issues last year was right here. We are both at the same elevation, so I'm at the second and third floors of the, where the project is. And my primary windows are, come out from this unit to the south, and the first, the second level all faces concrete block walls now, and the concern is for the upper level, which now has, you know, light and some sort of minor view over the rooftop. My concern was if this roof is raised, that even all of that will go away, and so that's, that's one of my concerns. But I do have several points. One is the, there's a swale that is right in here, and elevation-wise, that swale is higher, about three or four feet higher than the parking garage for Green City Lofts. And being a swale, I understand from talking to people here and looking at the drawings that that is actually going to be taking on more water, that more water is going to be directed to that than has been in the past. And knowing what swales are, they hold water and then slowly drain it into the ground. If that's not designed correctly, there can be leakage and/or flooding into the basement parking garage of our buildings. So what I would like to ask is that the Commission condition the project, that the design of that be looked at very carefully during the building permit process, to make sure that it's not going to adversely impact, you know, Green City Lofts.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's one. I've got about six points.
I'm sorry, your time's up. I have three minutes.
She's the only speaker.
I, I would, I would, we have a five-minute cap in, in certain instances, so do you think you would be able to finish it up in another, in another two minutes?
Well, I'll get a lot more there, so, yes, I would like to have that, please. I will go more quickly. I thought it was, if I was going to be droning on and on, that's one thing, but, okay.
Go for it.
Okay. The other thing too with the swale, one of the units is, it's not mine, it's the one below me, that's its only view, so having the landscape be designed not only for swale but also to be a nice view for those people, because it's, everything else around them is, is concrete block walls. The drawings do not show the solar panels where they are or what their configuration is, how far they stand up above the roof and so on, will they impact the views of Cynthia Carpenter's unit and my unit. Another is during construction and afterward is security for Green City Lofts, and that the contractors' temporary construction will not reach that or will consider that and deal with that, not impinge upon the security for Green City Lofts, either during construction or after the building is done. Next is the noise. You have a noise ordinance, you can't use pile drivers before 8:00 AM. There's a lot of other construction equipment that is very noisy, air-powered equipment, powder-actuated equipment, and diesel-powered equipment and generators. Some of these people live within three feet of the new construction, one of them being the disabled woman who was here before, who was there all the time, and I would ask that you extend that pile-driving equipment rule to include this other equipment so that they don't use noisy equipment before 8:00 AM. Finally, is that requesting that the construction documents, the schedule that the owner and the contractor make for the project, that allow adequate time for all of the noise-making work. I'm not talking about painting or setting up in the morning, but the work that actually makes noise be scheduled so that that can happen during the week and not have to happen on evenings or weekends, so that, so it will not impinge on the residents.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Last is the roof raising.
I'm sorry, but...
Okay. They told me today that this one roof is not being raised, and it is, so I have a complaint about that.
Okay. Well, you've had your five minutes. I appreciate that, and...
I think that that's, that's not fair.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, me too. Okay, this is my notes from now. I will send you a better one in the morning from these issues.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Did you want to hear a response from the applicant? Did you have a response?
I was just about to say, yeah, is there...
Okay.
Cabo, would you like to come up?
Good evening, Commissioners. It's been so long. There are some new people I haven't met before. So this is the set of working drawings that we've been working on. This building is so far gone that it's taken us quite a few iterations to figure out with the structural engineers how to handle things, and that's why it's taken as long as it has, but if the owner wasn't out of the country, he's in Vietnam, John Lopez was the general manager, we would have submitted it to the city and we wouldn't have needed the, the extension. But in general, we are building the building according to what was approved. That episode with the appeal to the council had to do with how we were treating that edge, the northern edge, against Cynthia's unit, and we were able to amicably sort of figure things out, and it actually cost the owner some more because of the structural shenanigans we had to go through, but we kind of leaned the, the roof over so that it wouldn't be as high next to her. That area that has landscaping in it was to be used for a, as, as it was called, a rain garden. It's basically to take some of the water out, but it basically is going to need to be dug up and redone so that it does become a container. It becomes a bathtub, and then it gets filled back in with, with dirt and planting.
Is that, is that what the swale, that's totally separate, or? I thought the rain garden was out on the street.
I don't think there's a swale there now. Yeah, it basically is, is a pretty common thing that happens because of the requirement of the state. It's called C3, which has to do with not being able to just discharge water off of roofs and stuff into the, onto the street. It basically have to collect it and then treat it and then send it off.
Is there, there is a swale on the east side that Ms. Adams was talking about? Is that correct?
It's going to.
Is it there now, and then it's going to remain? Or is nothing there?
No, it's, it's...
I was confused about where that was.
There it is.
Okay, okay.
I believe there is a unpaved patch of land there.
Okay.
Which I understand has some lemon trees in it.
There's a lemon tree about yay-high in it. It obviously is practically impossible to get to. There's a door from the inside. This building hasn't been occupied for over a decade. I actually looked at it with like six other developers, and none of them could figure out what to do with it. But anyway, it's, it's sort of a leftover piece of the property that is going to get properly landscaped, and the codes are pretty strict about how the thing gets built, and there's not going to have, I mean, we can't start draining our, off of our property onto someone else. So it, it, it's going to be properly done, so I can guarantee it.
Is the roof that was sort of leaned, as you say, from the last complaint?
Right.
Does that extend all the way to the east, or how does that roof lean?
Yeah, it goes all the way across from east to west, edge of the entire northern edge of it.
So it's been...
And it actually stops short of her unit.
Oh, okay.
Way short of it.
Okay.
Because if you go to, let me see if I can actually...
One of the others shows it going all the way across.
The roof plan ought to show it properly, hopefully. Yeah, you see that, that little, over here, I'll use this to point, but this here is pretty much what's in front of you. Where we're changing the roof is here.
Oh, it says existing roof structure raised and reused. That big one, right above where the...
Yeah, but these aren't, these are not our notes. They're, they're Arlie's notes.
Is it being raised?
Existing roof structure raised and reused. Actually, we've, we've raised, but it's still below the roof monitors. There are actual clear-story pop-ups. Those are going to go away, but the actual roof is going to be lower than the top of the existing one. So in essence, it's going to be lower than what one would see now. Yeah. She got her questions answered, one way or another.
That's right.
It does show the solar panels here, too, which...
Right.
Are they going to be flat panels?
Pardon me?
Flush panels, are they going to be raised?
You know, we haven't quite designed those yet, so I don't really know that part yet. John, do we know?
We're still working on it, but we're happy to share that information once we...
They look like they're a long way off from the other building.
They're a couple of years away, yeah. I mean, they're, as I said, the working...
Distance-wise.
Oh, the distance-wise.
The building, yeah, the other one.
Right, yeah, they're, they're, yeah, they're pretty far away, about 100 feet away.
Looking at the conditions, it's pile driving.
Yeah, it's a nice project. It's going to be a very nice, sustainable project. Have you thought of softening the impact of the roofs to the neighbors by doing a living green roof at all? Because it's almost, I mean, this must be gold. I don't know if you're going for certification, but you've got renewable energy.
That's true. You know, we hadn't really considered it, given that as we got into the building and the cost of construction went from this to that to the next, it just raised to the point where any discussion of that sort seemed to be like putting us over the edge. We do have a really, I mean, the artwork that, the panels are going to be done by Melissa McDonald, who's a total queen of the universe, you know, metal woman, and she's come up with a really beautiful thing, so I think you're right. It is going to be a nice comeback for the building that's like, all of those windows are either broken or replaced with, like partially with aluminum windows. We're taking those ones that were taken off the roof, refurbishing them, and replacing the ones down below, so it should look really good.
Is the retail conditional use, is it something that is required in the approval?
Yes. We're hoping for a cafe. We're actually drawn a kitchen, plumbing, you know, all the rough-ins are going to be in for a cafe, if we can get someone to go there, and we should be able to. It's a good spot facing southwest.
Yeah, I think it's a great way to activate this, this building in this, this area. Good.
Commissioner Steinberg, just to answer that more fully, the commercial space and the conditions of approval allows permitted by right eating and drinking establishments, convenience, retail sales, animal sales and services, grooming and pet stores.
Okay, cafe.
Cafe, yeah.
I don't think of anything else.
Own animals, yes.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question, just in terms of the, the parking calculation. So how does the, how does the cafe or retail space factor that into the 11 spaces that are there for the storage unit?
I think the idea was that it's small enough that it would attract from the neighborhood, and it wouldn't be a regional draw of any kind where it would put a burden onto the neighborhood. It's only around, I think, 1,200 square feet, and it was really put there because of the Commission's sort of desires and also a few of the neighbors. So I don't think the cafe was actually counted as such.
No, it was considered accessory, so that doesn't trigger parking requirement.
Right.
Parking requirement.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm not going to comment, I, I'd like to just approve this. This is a pretty no-brainer. I'd like to just approve this, this is a pretty no-brainer to me. I'd like to make a motion to approve the application, but I had a question for Charlie as far as noisy construction activity. Is it prohibited to start before 8:00 anyway?
Yes, the conditions of approval just reference pile driving. I was just talking to Arlie about this. We need to update our conditions of approval. The municipal code itself actually says pile driving and similarly loud activities shall be limited to weekdays, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So it's not just pile driving, it's anything that makes, you know, a noise that's as loud as pile driving. And even though it doesn't explicitly say that in the conditions of approval, the municipal code trumps the conditions of approval, so if the condition, if the municipal code says that, they just have to comply with that.
Okay, good.
I'll second your motion.
I guess we should take the roll, please.
All right. Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Moss is recused. Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Tan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cardoza?
Aye.
Chair Cumberley?
Aye.
Six ayes, the extension is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
Thank you. Really appreciate the reuse of the building and...
It's a nice project.
Look forward to the activation of that corner.
Yeah, we look forward to seeing it.
Yeah, I look forward to using it.
The formal email thing, so.
Okay.